Mr. President, I'd like to make motion of executive session under Act 42-465A2, sessions pertaining to collective bargaining or litigation. One potential litigation when Sockett's jurisdictional wastewater agreement, please, will let the record show no votes were taken and to seal the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Councilor Zelensky, second by Councilwoman Nato. Executive session, seal the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing the Madam Provo vote.
Sals, yes, Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mr. Sals.
Yes.
Yes. Discussion by Council Board of Action on the One Sockett intra-jurisdictional wastewater agreement. I'd like to motion to authorize a resolution. The town solicitor to demand arbitration under the town's intra-jurisdictional wastewater disposal service contract with the city of One Sockett. It goes as follows. Whereas the Federal Environmental Protection Agency, the state of Rhode Island, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the city of One Sockett, the town of North Smithfield, the town of Blackstone, and the town of Bellamy have joined in a plan to establish a regional wastewater collection and treatment project under the United States Clean Water Act statute. Whereas for almost forty years, the town has disposed of its wastewater treatment and collection facility, the facility owned and operated by the city of One Sockett, Rhode Island, called the city pursuant to an intra-jurisdictional wastewater disposal service contract dated as December 7, 1977, between the town and the city. Whereas the city with full knowledge that the town has no practical option but to continually to utilize the facility has relied upon the city's legal and equitable duty to treat the town fairly and equitably as its partner, has abused its effective monopoly power over the manner by which the town is compelled to dispose of its wastewater and breached the contract by inter alia. Number one, ignoring the statutory and contractual obligations to create an official board for the purpose of adopting policies and purposes with respect to the facility. And number two, unilaterally attempting to impose onerous new financial terms upon the town by, A, reducing the flow capacity allocated to the town from three million gallons per day, MGD, to 1.9 million gallons per day, by the contract that town's contribution to the capital cost was calculated under the contract while at the same time. B, maintaining the town's capital cost contribution percentage as if no reduction in flow capacity had been made by imposing a new arbitrary host fee, which bore no relation to the actual cost of operating the facility, contain an escalator clause linked to the consumer price index, which would, unlike a capital contribution, continue indefinitely, in which the city imposed a place into its general fund when unable to coerce the town by agreement. C, arbitrarily attempting to terminate the contract effective as of November 1, 2016, and then alleging the town has breached the contract would be liable for certain damages caused by the city's termination. And whereas since the city attempted to terminate the contract, the city and town have been attempting to negotiate a settlement of their differences with respect to the contract and oppose new contract to no avail. And whereas the contract provides that, A, controversial claiming arising out of relating to this agreement or breach therefore shall be settled by arbitration in accordance with the rules of the American Arbitration Association, and judgment upon the award rendered by the arbitrator or arbitrators may be entered in court having jurisdictional thereof, Contract 16.03, Act 26, and further that the decision of the arbitrators or majority of them, when reduced to writing and communicated to the parties to such proceedings through their designated representatives, shall be binding, shall be finally binding upon the parties, ID 16.06, Act 28. Now therefore, the council hereby resolves that the city solicitor... No, the town solicitor, sorry. Never. Well, city solicitor in Sockett will get it anyway, so. That the town solicitor is authorized to demand arbitration under the contract on behalf of the town, in consonance with the budget and communicated to the solicitor to retain such legal and other express, and to take whatever additional legal measures he deems necessary to attempt to ensure that, A, the town is compensated for damages has sustained as an approximate result of the city's breaches of the contract and in equitable conduct; B, the city meets its legal and equitable obligations to the town and signs a new intra-jurisdictional wastewater disposal service contract which apportions costs in an equitable manner; and C, the town is able to continue to use the facility under equitable terms during the course of any arbitration or legal proceedings. She motions to have this, have authored, have this passed on to our solicitor of action.
Second for discussion. We have two residents, at least, in the audience tonight that I would, for one, like to hear their thoughts on this resolution.
Who made it?
Mr. Halloran and Mr. McGee.
Second of discussion.
Certainly, we can obtain residents' input. Are we fine?
That's just me. Want to go all open it up, or do we have to open it up?
Okay.
Talking with draw, it's not a vote.
Motion by...
Just withdraw your motion, then we can open her up to public.
Okay, all right. Chair withdraws his motion at this time. Second withdraws his one.
Second withdraw.
Motion, Mr. President, open her up to residents for the public input, North Smithfield Town residents for the input.
Chase seconds. If we'd like to be, Mr. Halloran.
Thank you, Mr. President. I sat in the audience last week in town, and we stood up and talked about sewer issues. I sent out a note to the clerk and asked her to place this on the agenda. I just have some questions to ask you about the resolution, and it's the first time I've heard of this. Number one, are you placing a cap on the amount of legal fees that are going to go to defend the town in the arbitration? Are you going to have to hire outside counsel?
Mr. President, if I may, anticipation, I don't know that we should be discussing legal fees or any of that. Is this something, because it is possible, if this becomes a legal contentious issue, why wouldn't we discuss that part of a fee or a cap?
You would need to, but obviously, the budget is public information, and obviously, you know that there's, you have legal fees at your disposal.
I do understand that, but I just would not want to be in opposition to say, okay, let's just, let's just litigate this in the debate, and that's not...
That's a very, that's a good point.
That's my point.
Withdraw the question, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Halloran.
Next point is, was talk about going to borrow, was talk about going to other issues. Darren Gansett, I heard once Darren Gansett made a mission, somebody else said, I don't think it was the council, Phil Darrow. Are you withdrawing any ideas of going to borrow at this time? Are you going to expend any monies on that portion of your ideas?
Currently, this council has looked at every possible avenue of dealing with, dealing with the wastewater issue, and even some creative, creative issues. However, they were, at the present time, whether it be bad timing in some cases or cost prohibitive in others, basically, we're stuck with the monopoly of One Sockett.
So basically, all those other ideas...
Are off the table at the present time. Maybe thirty, maybe twenty-three years from now, that might be a different story.
Then you certainly cut the time. I'm going to stand at the microphone now. Will it be necessary, in question to the solicitor, for you, in the arbitration, to go into Superior Court and get a temporary string in order against Sockett when you see any shadow in the level, if you haven't gone that far?
Well, those, those decisions will be made at the time, they won't be made now. There's no, there's no decision on those now.
So you're only, the plan then for the town, as of this moment, so tonight when you take this vote, will be to go in, to do the arbitration somewhere, probably in Providence or something, and the results of that will be binding on all parties. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this issue?
I would like to speak under the rules of the topic-specific department head. This whole process has introduced an enormous amount of risk investment by people who live in town and by people who are looking at the town's place to invest. I get calls every week wanting an explanation of what's going on, and this arbitration with its timeline and the assumption that they will put off any activity until the arbitration is complete raises even more risk. Eighty percent of the people who invest or are considering investing in North Smithfield are unknown to you because they can look at this town from afar, they can read the Valley Greedies, they can read the minutes of the zoning board review and the planning board and the town council. And that's really my concern, that this uncertainty is simply going to be more obvious because the technique that you're using now has a potential to push you over the edge if the other party is not willing to postpone their actions until after the arbitration is finished. That's my only comment. I can't do economic development for the town in this atmosphere, period. And you need to understand that.
Thank you, Mr. Erickson. Okay, public comment, we close at this time?
Second, you want to roll call?
Motion, second. Motion, second, to close the public comment. Motion by Councilor Zelensky, second by Councilwoman Nato. Okay. And now, first, to close the public comment, who are the voters?
Sals, yes, Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mr. Sals, Mr. Zelensky, Mr. Bushen.
Yes. Motion by the chair to, the resolution authorizing the town solicitor to demand arbitration under the town's intra-jurisdictional wastewater disposal contract with the city.
Second.
Motion by the chair, second by Councilor Zelensky. Would I make further discussion? Hearing the Madam Provo vote, please.
Sals, yes, Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mr. Sals.
Yes.
Mr. Bushen.
Yes.
Mr. President, do you want to comment on the press release as well? Do you want to indicate if that will be included?
Sure.
Mr. President, is the solicitor reading the press release and having it be read, or just distributed?
Contributed.
Okay. Yeah, we want to read it. I'll read it. The press release, North Smithfield, North Smithfield, Rhode Island Town Council, we released April 4, 2016. North Smithfield Town Council today, Tuesday, initially passed a resolution authorizing the town solicitor to demand arbitration to resolve various disputes under its wastewater disposal service contract with the city of One Sockett. For almost forty years, the town has disposed of its wastewater treatment and collection facility owned and operated by One Sockett pursuant to a wastewater disposal service contract with the city. The Massachusetts town of Blackstone and Bellamy have entered into similar contracts with the, with One Sockett. The resolution passed by the council today claims that One Sockett breached the contract with full knowledge in that the town has no practical option but to continue to utilize the One Sockett facility. According to town council president Robert Paul Bushen, the town has relied upon One Sockett's legal and equitable duty to treat the town fairly and equitably as its partner, yet the city has abused its effective monopoly power. The resolution provides that One Sockett breached its contracts with the town by, along other things, failing to create an official board for the purpose of adopting policies and programs with respect to the facility and unilaterally attempting to reduce the total flow capacity allocated to the town from three million gallons per day to 1.9 million gallons per day, while at the same time imposing onerous new financial terms. It goes on to claim that One Sockett attempted to impose an arbitrary host fee which bore no relation to the actual cost of operating the facility, and then the town would not agree, attempted to terminate the contract as effective as November 1, 2016. The town council has authorized the city solicitor to demand arbitration under the contract so that One Sockett meets its legal and equitable obligations to the town and signs a new contract which apportions costs in an equitable manner, ensures that the town is able to continue to use the One Sockett facility under equitable terms during the dispute. And that is the press release.
Is there a motion to circulate?
Joe, you want to cut?
Yeah. Motion by the chair to circulate.
Second.
Press release. Councilwoman Nato. Is any further discussion or comments by the council?
I would like to provide means of introduction to One Sockett, call the Valley Greedies, posted on our web page.
Just correct the city solicitor, Tom, give us the...
Yeah, it's disgusting.
In the version for the Greedies, it was corrected.
Motion by Councilwoman Nato. If discussion, second by the chair. Do so. Is any further discussion? Hearing the Madam Provo vote, please.
Sals, yes, Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mr. Sals.
Yes.
Mr. Bushen.
Yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make the motion to move up under old business item H, the PBIC updates.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Nato, second by the chair, to move up H as an exception. Any further discussion? Hearing the Madam Provo vote, please.
Sals, yes, Mrs. Nato.
Yes.
Mr. Sals.
Yes.
Mr. Bushen.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I had Mr. Cardello listed last on my two-page bulletin list, but I will let him come up first, so he can go home. So, Mr. Cardello will give us an update on contact with PAR and the road bonds.
Good evening. Just a quick update, PAR has submitted hundred percent plans and a specification to move the contract book to go to public bid. That actually came in three or four weeks ago due to my scheduling and also Doug Allen, who's also working on this, his scheduling. We actually finally just got to meet with PAR last Friday to review it. We went through it, they've expended a hundred percent of the hours, we've given them markups, have agreed to make corrections, revisions, hoping to have it come by Friday of this week. They also provided, submitted a contract amendment for construction, how do you phrase it? For construction services, basically, bid review and that type of stuff, which was in the original contract to be done by supplemental agreement. He gave me a quick draft of it last Friday, we looked at it, we reviewed it, we revised it, he emailed me a copy today, a revised copy. I just looked at it, it's in the vicinity of $9,000, which is probably reasonable, that would be to do the advertising, answer contracted questions, submit the bid, review the bids once they come in, and help the town in award of the contract. It's a little better. So I don't have a final copy of it yet, we haven't reviewed it yet. Just glancing at it, it seems reasonable, we'll have that for you next week. PAR is going forward, even without that being signed or approved by the council at this point. And hopefully, we're working with dates. It gets tricky on when we advertise a contract, how we have a pre-bid, pre-construction meeting, when we receive the bids, when we can get that information from the council, get it approved, and then award the contract. The first three weeks are easy, advertise, one week later, we do pre-construction, two weeks after that, we would receive bids from the contractor. The PBIC would review them, develop a recommendation to the council, so we're at the mercy of the council scheduled for that, make our recommendation, get your input, if the recommendation is to avoid, that comes at very first meeting, sign the contract within three days, notice to proceed is ten days after that. Long's very short, we should be in construction sometime in June. We're trying to get closer to the beginning of June, if we get to the end of June, basically, most contractors are going to just wait until after the Fourth of July. And we've actually put that in the contract, once they start reclaiming the road, we don't want that road down to gravel for more than ten days. So it's going to get asphalt down on it within ten days of reclamation. That will control your dust and make travel a little bit easier. So, that's where we stand.
I don't believe that we have yet made public what roads, but we did in PBIC in minutes of the last meeting, we did, so it is now public information because our agendas are all public information and on a Google Drive. I have them, do you want to talk about it, or you, you want me to?
I can give you the Reader's Digest version. It was a list of roads in the Cassell report, I think there were twenty-nine roads originally. We scratched off the roads that were going, potentially subject to sewer improvements, they came right off the top, twenty-nine. Even at that, given the budget we had very early on, I know, I said, we weren't looking at number of roads, we're looking at length of road, total roads. I think we're at 5.9 miles with the road, because there are four roads that we're proposing that are on the, what we call the base bid. Those four roads, four roads that we wanted to... Roseanne, you can help me.
Iron Mine.
Iron Mine.
Iron Mine, Sales Hill, Black Plain, Pound Hill.
Right.
For full depth of reclamation with some overlay on the pound.
Right, and that's what we call the base bid. So we'll get a bid for those roads. Our estimation is that those four roads could take costly type amount of bond. If the bids come in better, which we're hoping, we have add alternates, A through F. I don't want to give an order for those, because depending on how much money we have left over, we'll pick and choose which road fits, or we might have to modify and say, do half of the next road. I know One Sockett Hill Road is on the list of an add alternate, and I don't know if you have a list of all the add alternates?
I don't have the list of the add alternates, which is...
I might, I might actually have it in this document.
We don't have to make that public.
But there are right...
You're ready to grow a bond, you have the documents ready to put forward?
Right. Part of this whole procedure is sitting down with Jason so that he can do whatever magic he has to do with the bonds, and we actually, we need to meet with you anyway because the way the contract's written right now, everything's going to go to you, actually, the bids will be distributed by you. We've asked that, you know, we advertise that contractors will come in to pick up plans and specifications, there is a fee for that, checks will be made out payable to the government of Smithfield, it's non-refundable, so that's money back into this project, basically offsets some of the printed costs that we're going to incur from, from PAR. But, you know, everything we did, I'm calling for you...
Point of contact at this time.
Point of contact, we spoke with PAR about the point contract, the contract with questions. I think we're going to put Jason down, all questions need to go in email to Jason and to somebody at PAR. I think I also put my else on, pardon? No. The project manager, I forget what it is now, Keith, Keith MacDowell. I've also asked that I get carbon copied at my personal email, basically, PBIC is going to have to answer the questions, PAR might answer them, but they will answer them with the consent or agreement by PBIC. So just to keep things moving, Jason's out, we want people working on the responses. Contractually, all responses have to be given to the contract in no less than, it's either forty-eight or seventy-two hours in advance of the bid. If we don't get it, if we get a question that we can't answer in that timeframe, basically, we have to postpone the bid, and that's just a legal thing. So, we've said all bids, all questions have to be in seven days prior to bid. Again, while we're chasing on the dates.
From a financial standpoint, we're ready for our April 15 date to start drawing on the bonds. We have what we need.
Yeah, we could give him a hundred percent plans, and this is the first draft, it's not marked up, I gave my copy to PAR, but they're going to give us a revised draft on Friday. Again, the only thing that's missing is dates. We really need to sit down and figure out what the dates are going to be.
Okay, now, stay up, because I'll ask you one more question.
Okay.
The Cassell report gave us just about thirty roads. We're only doing four, maybe a little bit more. Why are we doing it this way?
Sala report gave about thirty roads totaling about thirteen miles. Thirteen miles, and Sala report said he would, for overlay, go in, back up the pavement, put two inches of pavement down, be done. We're not doing that. We're doing full depth reclamation, go in, grind out the existing pavement, pulverize it, put calcium in there, grade it, do it again, grade it again, pack it, and put in four inches of pavement rather than two inches of pavement. Long's very short, if you just, just in the pavement, that we're doing a two-inch overlay, we're doing four inches of new pavement and fixing the subbase. We're doing a lot more work. We're doing about half the road. Two inches of pavement, four inches of pavement, thirteen miles, six miles. Money's all on pavement. We're putting down twice as much pavement. Overlays could fail as early as a year, three years, you'd be out into a cracked ceiling, getting potholes, and basically, back right back where we are. Full depth reclamation is a new road, you get fifteen to twenty years, if it's dug right. Which brings up your clerk of the works, PAR has provided in the original proposal an onsite inspector, we met with him on Friday, he will be there, he wrote the contract, he wrote the specs, he knows what's expected of the contractor, and basically plans on enforcing it. We've also left openings, if he doesn't feel, compaction is a big thing. If he doesn't think he's getting compaction from the contractor, basically, we've instructed him to call PBIC, we'll stop the job, I'm going to, we come back and ask the town to do third-party testing. That's a cost we don't want to spend, but I don't want to pave something that's not compacting. So, that might be something we want to bring up earlier if we have, quote-unquote, the slush point for third-party inspection if needed. We don't want to do it. I mean, if contractor compacts it, the guy who's going to be on the on-site has done this before, he'll know whether it's compacting to ninety-five percent or not. If we need to beat the contractor with the stick and get testing and prove that he's wrong, we just need the ability to do that.
So PAR is working as a true clerk of the works rather than an onerous project manager?
Yes.
So he does not have the authority, he would have to, job stops, come back to PBIC, and then...
The town of North Smithfield owns the project, the town of North Smithfield is the one with the checkbook. Basically, and, yeah, he knows that, he can't order extra pavement, or say, yeah, bring this, you know, add another hundred feet to this road because it looks bad. I want to do that with our consent. So, basically, it's going to come down to money. If we have a bid price for so much on a road, and he wants to do an extra hundred feet, there's going to be an overhaul. I want to know about it before it happens. Because, you know, we'll be watching the money to see, yeah, we really should do it, but we just don't have the money, or not, you know? As I've said before, the well's only so deep. It's 2.5 million, less any fees and costs, so.
I think you, Joe.
Okay. Thank you.
Does anybody in the council have any questions about where we are with roads? How we've gotten to, the number of roads we've gotten to? Why we're only getting just about half of the mileage?
Half, half the distance. So we're putting down twice, half the distance, twice the pavement.
Right. But we won't have to come back and look at these roads again by fixing the substrate of it, the base. Much better job than just a two-inch overlay where we're gonna come back in another year or two and have to do Iron Mine again. Especially a road like Iron Mine. I just drove Iron Mine. It's horrible. And I love bumpy roads. I know you've lived there, but it's terrible.
The road selection again was all vetted with the DPW. We, it wasn't, wasn't PBIC's choice, basically. We rarely asked the DPW, "Where do you get the most calls? Where do you spend most of your time fixing potholes, drainage, and so on and so forth?" And basically, DPW gave us their list.
Can I? This is more a legal question. If I remember right, what we voted, we voted for 30 roads. I think that was actually how it was voted. Does that become an issue? I'm pretty sure the bond referendum was to repave 30 roads.
I think we, I have to go look at it. I thought we looked at this.
I wanna done right. Don't get me wrong. I just want me to...
We vetted this out already. I remember that, but...
I don't believe the bond referendum referred to a number of roads. And that was, that's why they, I think there was, it was, was there was a lot of information.
There was a study reform.
Yeah, there was a study that was reform. I had the 30 roads. I thought, I thought the bond referendum was tied.
Bond referendum, like, we did not have a number of it. I don't have it. I'd have to look at it, but I'm happy to look at it if we...
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we don't...
Yeah, no, we, we went down this road because that was a concern.
Well, you and I had talked about it prior to the, before, about the...
Yeah, it was, it was hashed out that the number of roads was not important.
Oh, no, we, yeah, you and I had discussed mileage versus number of roads and obviously doing it the right way. I just wanna make sure there's not back end kind of bias from behind, you know?
That's a political football that I have nothing to do with.
So it's 60 miles, like you're getting on roads.
Right.
The easiest way is half the distance, twice the pavement. The money's still, I mean, it's still there. And that's, that's based on, you know, an average price of asphalt right now. Oil is down. Asphalt prices are expected to be down. I know there's one bid that just came in high. But that's, you know, a job someplace else and it had other circumstances. Basically, they weren't gonna pay for two years, so... This is called paper, yeah, in the next couple of months. Oil prices aren't gonna skyrocket like that.
And another thing that I wanna underscore, the Cassell report did not take into account any roads that couldn't be chewed up to put sewers in. That wasn't thought of.
Well, that, or eight or nine roads, or, like I said, I believe 29, we took those right off. Right off, so we were automatically working with up to 20 roads.
Right. So we started with a smaller list than 30 and worked very closely with DPW to find the absolute worst roads. Where we would get the most bang for our buck.
Two inches of asphalt is, I don't know if I should say this.
Don't. Good night, Joe.
Joe, now that it's two inches, you don't wait, that was not worth wasting your money on.
It's eye wash.
It's gonna look good for a couple of years, that bid.
You said a couple of years. I didn't.
Maybe.
Take care.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, so I have quite a few bullet points that I need to go through. The PBIC and the $12 million in bonds definitely needs to be a top priority for the council. I would ask that under old business, PBIC become the first standing agenda item. So we could have more public interaction and people from PBIC joining in discussions, backing up on anything that I'm saying.
That's a point. Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Second?
Motion by the Council of the Mayor, second by Council of Sanoski. To have the PBIC placed on the company's agenda.
Can we further discuss? Can we announce a vote, please?
Ms. Als, yes, Ms. Nae, Ms. Slough, Ms. Wallace.
Yes, there's be a standing order.
Yes, thank you. Okay, now, keeping the projects on track. The council has powers that are not included within the scope of PBIC. There has been some attendance and participation issues that I've been noticing at PBIC meetings. I need the council to stand with me and I need the power of the council behind me when it comes to issues that PBIC is facing right now. There's a few. The business owners, and I'm gonna call them business owners for lack of a better term, and I'm absolutely unequivocally excluding Jason from this. Business owners, oh, and Peter Granconia from EMA, he's excluded from the statement I'm about to make as well. The business owners have not lived up to their responsibility to supply Studio Masia with their vendors for IT, security, FFNE, which is furniture, extras, equipment. They have not given their vendors scope. Basically, we got the name of the vendors by the deadline, which was April 1st. I've sent very strongly worded emails where if they don't get that information to Studio Masia, then I'm making the decisions for them. Really, I don't have that authority. The town council does. So I would come to the council and we would start making some changes. At this late point in time, and I'm gonna call on Mr. Rapko to back this up because he was at the meeting today. At this late point in time, we are now past 30% construction design for this building. I'll get to schools in a little bit. Past 30% construction documents for this building. I wanna stress how important that is. Construction documents include wiring, plumbing, all the MEP. Without our IT vendors, without security, we don't know where the wires are gonna go. Are you just waving at me?
No, I was gonna see if I could talk for one second.
Please.
There was a meeting held today with Studio Masia and said, "End users," I'll call them. That's my word for it. As far as the consultants, the outline of the scope and the communication with Studio Masia for this building, for the Kendall Dean project of this, for a portion of this project, we are back on track with Studio Masia as of today.
Absolutely fantastic.
So that leaves us with the Bushy side of it as the question mark. Because I don't, I don't think without a meeting that was had like today where all of the people were involved, PBIC representation, school administration, town administration, Masia, the consultants themselves, without that meeting, all the questions that are unanswered is why time goes by without things happening.
Right, they don't have guidance. They don't know what they're supposed to be doing.
Correct. So I, I think a meeting of the minds like what was had today about this building would get it back on track.
Okay.
So that's just, I'm sorry.
The police, I did talk to Captain Lamra at the last PBIC meeting. They're trying to get there, but like you said, they don't know exactly what direction.
The meeting would be huge for them. It would be huge.
Right, absolutely. So we will do that. They are invited to our April 11th meeting.
Just another, one other thing. I, I've offered to, me to jump in with Bushy on this as well. Currently, I've only been involved in the KDPs because I'm a user of this building. That's the other reason why I'm involved in this one. But I would get into that side of it as well. I think a little bit of leadership today is what brought it back and made it easy for us to all know where we're going.
I think that's great.
It definitely would help to have them sit at the table and have some questions answered and know what direction. Now with a little bit of guidance. Made, Studio Masia and Eric played a huge role today to help us know what we actually need to do for them. Without that meeting, it was kind of a, "Well, what are we supposed to do? Am I the one drawing it? Am I the one installing it?" We didn't know any of these answers, who's paying for it, what those situations are. Now that that's out there, I think we have a great jump in to know that this is not an issue, the KD portion. That just puts us at the same high navel with the, with the Bushy side. So that's why I suggest the meeting would be so valuable for having all those end users and their consultants, just like we had today. It really put us miles ahead of where we were.
Okay, so that's, that's all the good news of what came out of today. How about some of the bad news?
As far as costs?
As far as, we'll hold the costs for a minute. As far as... Mike, you wanna get up and talk about this part of it?
Mike Rapko, I attended this morning's meeting with Jason representing Roseanne because she had another, some home issues. The first thing I brought up at the meeting, which is very important, is that we have a deadline of April 15. If we mess up details for Jason, it doesn't get the bond council and you can't vote a bond. So, once I brought that up, there was a lot of hostility. But I think they realized after about 10 or 15 minutes that we had to resolve these issues. We're running out of time. We've got 11 more days to have documents to Jason. Based upon that, with the consultants in the room, they had their checklist. They were able to present up details. We were able to review the details and decide which of those details belonged into which categories, whether it belonged in IT, whether it belonged in construction materials or furniture. We resolved that today. There's still a lot of small open issues. For example, vacating Kendall Dean as to what, and what's a good point that we do vacate the building. Superintendent is staying steadfast on July 31st. I thought it was an issue because I wanna make sure that we don't put pressure on the architect that we're gonna cause construction problems next year by vacating the building too late. I had asked for an earlier date. We tried July 1st. That was rejected. I brought up July 15th and it's refused. So that, we're gonna have to negotiate. I think the superintendent is willing to try to do his best to vacate the building before July 31st, but he said, "I cannot completely leave the building until the 31st." So we just hope it does not cause issues with the construction to remove asbestos or whatever you're gonna start doing on this project. But at least we're gonna try to work together on the date of vacating the building. They started looking at the Andrews School and the, and the, and the middle school where the superintendent is gonna move his supporting staff. So there's a lot of issues that we're not sure about at the Andrews School, whether we can use the basement for storage of materials, if we have to do anything on the upper floors. But that's the superintendent that has to resolve that issue. That's not Jason and I or Roseanne. That's gonna be the superintendent to resolve that issue. Because we gotta get him out of the building. So my purpose today was to say, "Don't get in the way. You're gonna solve these problems. They may be big or small. Just solve the problem. Let's go forward." I don't wanna jeopardize the project. So I think at the end of the meeting, I think we came to consensus that we're gonna move forward. So there was good news on the, on the Kendall Dean, as Jason said, the Bushy public safety complex. That's another issue. We gotta, we gotta get away from calling it the police department or EMA because of the funding that Peter Granconia can generate grant money, but you gotta have the correct terminology for the building, which should be a public safety complex and not a police department. Because Peter can't get money. He can't get money if it's a police department. So I guess the next step is to change all our drawings and verbiage. That it's gonna be a public safety complex at the Bushy location. That's very important for future funding for grants. So I agree with Jason that we gotta, we have a short timeframe. If April 11th is gonna be a joint meeting, I think some of the Kendall Dean issues will come up. I don't know if we have time on April 11th to talk about Bushy. It may be too premature. What worked well today is we got a checklist from, from the consultants about what they needed for IT and for security. If we could get those documents ahead of time, we could bring them up on April 11th. But if we don't have those documents with details and costs, I think we're wasting our time trying to bring Bushy into the April 11th meeting. Which would mean if we can't do it on April 11th, we're gonna have to have an emergency meeting between the 11th and the 15th so that we can get the documents collected to give it to Jason on the 15th. We gotta present both buildings. We're comfortable with Kendall Dean. We're not there yet on Bushy. So we have a short window and we gotta find a solution. So it's either gonna be a meeting on the 11th with the proper detail of, from the consultants, or if it's not the 11th, in sometime between the 11th and 15th, it's gonna be resolved. It's the what we need for cost.
It is on the agenda for the 11th and hopefully all of that will be resolved. Then we have some soft costs, but we're not sure exactly how we're gonna allocate those, what they can be allocated to. We have some other things that Mr. Rapko brought up that are things that RGB did not account for in their documents. Moving expenses. That was never thought of. There's security at whatever temporary offices. There's trailers for housing and storage. Temple offices, the design work and the feasibility study, we recorded at $3,500 just for school admin to figure out where they're gonna go. The, and paying actual moving vendors. How do we pay for that? Who pays for that? Does that come out of the bond? Is it a soft cost? Is it, we need to...
We got some of those answers today.
You did?
Yes.
Okay.
Soft cost is the catch-all that wasn't delineated amongst categories. So after doing the math today, we would be including all move costs onto the soft cost and it would still leave us with some contingent left in soft cost that we don't know what it's applied to. So we don't exactly know the full breakdown of the soft cost. So there's, that's kind of what the issue that you just mentioned is. It's just a pot of money and it doesn't tell you what it goes to. The discussions we had today with Kendall Dean, we know where those buckets go now. And so for Kendall Dean, I think we're confident on where we are that we can afford those move costs once these proposals come back of cost. You know, obviously, if it comes at three times what we estimated in our exercise today, that would change our thoughts. I don't think there's an issue with the KD piece with that. So there, it's a, the issue we have with KD is a piece of equipment for $60,000 for a generator.
Right, and that's another thing that I was gonna bring up, but that...
I spoke, I spoke with Eric about that, though. And he said that could fit into the overage/underage on the construction side. If we have underages here, we can put it in. If we have an overage, maybe we'll do an add alternate to equip that. So there's ways to get around that on the construction piece as well, according to the meeting we had today.
So bottom line is good news on Kendall Dean. I think we have to talk to Eric Army that we're gonna come in within budget. Even after we spread out all this money for generators, moving costs, which is good news, there's still a buffer left in the budget for Kendall Dean, a safety budget. You know, whether it's $100,000, $200,000, it's still there as a contingency.
I heard, I actually, I have an actual question that I don't know the answer to before I ask it. Because everything else that I've outside, I saw your emails. I know exactly what happened today. I've heard that we have a 10% contingency on the bond and a 20%, which one's accurate?
From what I can see, it's 10.
That's, that's what I think.
I think 10 minus, 10 plus is the discussion we had today.
Okay. Right, because that's average for a construction project. Like, put 10% for contingency, but I heard 20 and I got all happy.
That's the unknown because the unearmarked soft cost, if it's not needed, that would go towards the construction contingency to maybe increase that from 10 to 15. I don't know what the number is. But if the soft cost, it does not, you know, earmarked against the cost we needed for, that would just go into the construction contingency side. You know, not spent, soft cost added to construction budget. Or, you know, as our contingency for that, you know, if it goes over.
Okay, correct. Okay, so we're at, at least 30%, which I know it's closer to about 40% now, of construction design documents for this building. Okay, so we're at, at least thirty percent, which I know it's closer to about forty percent now, of construction design documents for this building. The Bushy school actually isn't being touched until this building is complete, which will be about a year of construction. The Police Department is working on their own, or Police and EMA, so the, the full Public Safety Complex, let's get used to calling it Public Safety Complex, some people don't like it, but that's what we're gonna have to call it. They're working together, EMA and Police are working together to figure out a way that they can move and share some services and possible housing and municipal aid, where if we have arrests or detainees, where they're gonna go. Because we can't put them in a storage trailer, you can't put them in a hall. They'll go to a neighboring city or town, and that mutual aid doesn't cost us any more money, we know that. If we move them to what will then be an empty town hall during their construction phase, which would be about another year, they already have their towers, they can reuse a lot of what they have, the offices are already set up. So that's looking to be a fairly good solution, but they're ironing that out, we're waiting for them to come back with some estimated prices. There should be an open grant that we're trying for, for a hundred and fifty thousand, I believe Bob Erickson is working on that. That would be a historic grant for this building to hopefully offset some costs. I don't know where we are with that, but I know that the deadline is looming. Mr. Erickson, do you want to speak about that? The grant that's, I'll say up to a hundred and fifty...
Yeah, it'll come out in, uh, uh, May, and it'll be due probably again on August, early August, mid-August. And, uh, we're going to meet with, uh, the architects at Rhode Island Historic Preservation and get their approval on all the things we plan to do. So that if the work gets done before the grant is announced, they will pay for stuff, they will, they will be EMA purchasing. And, um, it's the only way to go, because with RGB, we had no idea what the real costs were and what the actual techniques that we would do to... Some of these will be replacement windows, on the side will have indoor storm windows, everything is cost plus appearance, so I think they've got that down pretty well.
Excellent, thank you very much. The Historic District Commission has been meeting and approving what the outside of this building will look like, because we do have to replace windows. And we're trying to keep with its door appeal that it's always had. But for instance, a few things that we'll be changing is this door will be an exit only, that's on the side of us. The entrance to this room will be moved over to that corner, and there will be an airlock. So if people want to, need to go have side conversations, they can do that and they'll be separate from us, we won't hear them. We can, we'll be able to see them, there'll be a translucent surface, but it'll feel separate. And what we're looking at in the back will be all opened up and, uh, look actually very, very nice, I've seen the drawings, I know what it looks like. And to this point, I've seen what this building will look like when it's completed, and I've seen what Bushy will look like on the outside, what, sorry, Public Safety Complex will look like on the outside when it's complete, and I've given some insight into that, that the PBIC seemed to agree with. Now, uh, I need to request, so I'm going to make a motion, but I need the council to help me decide what is the best option for the construction portion of its time, that we hire either an owner's project manager, an architect's field rep, or clerk of the works. There's a difference, and that difference is heavily weighted cost. The owner's project manager is someone who would be on-site, but not on-site every day, they would be watching, but they have authority to make changes during construction. And they're very expensive, so they're the highest. The architect's field rep has the knowledge of everything that's changing because they're the architect. And that would be at the same rate that we're paying the architect now. And they would have some authority, but not as much as an owner's project manager, they would have some authority because they understand what we're trying to do, because they've been there from the beginning with the drawings. And then, uh, the clerk of the works, so clerk of the works is what we have with PA. They have zero authority when it comes to any issues that might arise with construction. They would have to stop the job, come to PBIC, PBIC would then have to come to town council to make a recommendation. The PBIC, and I want to make this clear, has not decided which option we would prefer with an owner's project manager, an architect's field rep, or clerk of the works. But it's time to submit that RFP, we have to do it tonight, because it's that sorely needed. I, I don't know that I would, we could possibly wait till April 11th and have PBIC there and make the decision, but I really need to get that RFP out as soon as possible. Looking at all of the scope of work of what the three types do, I'm leaning most towards an architect's field rep. So I would like to make a vote for an RFP to, uh, go out the bid for an architect's field rep for the construction of Kendall Dean perhaps.
I'll second for discussion. When particularly do you feel with that versus, uh, I can, I can understand there's more flexibility in architect's, uh, field rep?
Yes.
And of course you're working hand in hand with the architect itself.
Yes.
Therefore, it's, what's the difference between, of course, as far as that, the clerk of the works per se?
The clerk of the works and the architect's field rep are fairly close in cost, but the owner's project manager, we're talking...
Yeah, but I don't think on the site, yeah.
A lot, a lot more. So with the architect's field rep, we're getting a little bit more than what a clerk of the works is, and it could be our own architect who knows.
So would this be number four in there, advertising four?
Yes.
So you, what, in the terminology you said is a field rep, architect field rep?
Yes.
Any further discussion, void?
So we don't have any data to figure out the differences between the three?
I had, uh, rough estimates, but it's, it's nothing that I would like to give because I don't trust them, because they were just ideas. The owner's project manager was over a hundred thousand.
I, I just have a concern on voting for something, I don't know how much it's gonna cost.
I assure you, it's hard.
If we can wait till the 11th, why can't we wait till then so we can have the input of the PBIC?
We can, and, um, it might push out dates, but we can do that, and that is why I gave that as an option. So if that's what pleases the council, that is what we will do.
Counsel, did you get a feeling, sorry, I'm sorry, may I address counsel later on?
Counsel, did you get a feeling, I, I know that the PBIC didn't vote, or was there a consensus which way they, they wanted to go?
They were leaning more towards an owner's project manager, but I don't believe that we can afford it. We can, we can certainly wait till April 11th, I, I want the council to be very comfortable in what they do. It's only a week.
I would feel that.
Okay, so, um, motion, what's going?
This is a, this is a solicitor, go, you're...
I just wanted to make, if I understood the, the issue, I would just make a suggestion, if it, if it's, I was just talking to Jason about this. If it's a matter of an RFP, if you put an RFP out for all three possibilities, it'll be an extra three hundred dollars for advertising.
At the most.
At the most, and then you could decide based upon what comes in, what you think is best. You advertise RFP for all three possibilities and you make a decision which possibility, unless you really want a fair and true...
Okay, I, I don't have a problem with that, but I believe we just have to have unanimous vote on the agenda, because it's down here for advertising for clerk of the works.
Oh.
Okay, so, you know, if you want to, now if we have it unanimous, we can change the agenda this evening to say, uh, owner project manager, or architect field rep. And then, then that begs the question, do we, do we put this out there and people spin their wheels, putting in a proposal and...
That's a good point, too.
You know, there is some credibility attached to the task.
I'm just thinking about the time period, if you're gonna say you advertise for one, and then you realize you want another, you're advertising it. I don't know what the time pressure is, um, yeah, I mean, there's some time pressure.
It's tight, it's tight, but we'll make it work, it's only a week, we'll make it work. The priority to complete Kendall Dean on schedule may mean, this is directly from Mr. Rapko's email, uh, from this morning, the priority to complete Kendall Dean on schedule...